Can anybody hear us? Is the uh?
Are you reading?
Where did it go? These topics. This is all. Daniel, can you hear us?
I can hear you, but you're very blurry.
We can't hear, we can't hear them. We're having a couple of technical difficulties, give us a minute.
Okay. I can hear you, I can hear you, yeah.
Thank you, can you, can you see us?
I, I can see you're all blurry, like if I take my glasses off. And it is, it focuses on someone who's speaking, I think, but everyone else is a blurry back. There you go, that's good, there you go.
Did you go? All right. Yeah, we are good though?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, so call to order, uh, special meeting at five thirty-five. Um, let's see, and we don't have any council members online, just she's here. Okay, so anything for the, go to the order. Uh, go ahead, Council member. Yeah, I just wanted, um, I think council, all of council about the email, but uh, there is a thing called salmon days. It's a fun little event this month, all month, maybe it's called salmon month, anyway, I shouldn't have the name right. But um, you can go around and think of these little trading cards, there are different businesses, events, um, at some of the places. You know, questions like, maybe five salmon facts, and they'll give you one, but I got this one at the Dory Farmstead, they had a castle this weekend. Um, and each card is different, um, it gives facts about salmon, so it's a fun event. There's um, an art component, economic development component, and obviously an educational component. So anyway, I'll pass it around, I encourage everyone to check it out.
As you can, just in the desert, because there is pretty like a grain, there's like a salmon.
That sounds fun, I have things to study. Should have put together a council team.
Oh, yeah.
Be able to be roaring or whatever, I don't know how we know. Um, okay, anything else for the given order? And we were gonna do introductions, since it's not technically a joint thing, question anymore, I think we can probably just skip that and save that for next time. Or do you still wanna go around, since there's something there?
We should.
Okay, so let's start with down at that end.
Uh, good evening, everyone, Steve Blanchest, Steve Public Works.
Uh, council member Natalie. And then a council member.
And Rick Schaefer, council member.
Amy McHenry, Mayor Pluton, Amy McRidermeyer.
Floyd Berson, uh, Federation.
Mike Suckle, council manager.
Laura Thomas, community development.
Sherry James, deputy city clerk.
William Chappell, legislature chair.
What were you praying to? Uh, let's see, and we've got our city administrator, online, Cindy Mab, and Troy Davis. Alright, so we'll just go and move to our first discussion item going on this, um, sort of presentation from A R C with Daniel Bodeman.
Uh, so, good evening, everyone, Steve Blanchest, Steve Public Works, Dan Bottles here, and Sherry, you could pull up the slides.
Or I, I can share a screen if you allow me to.
Yeah, it was easier.
Share a screen.
You share a screen, please, Daniel.
Sure, if she, host disables, just lets me have uh, control, I can share.
And forum? Enable. Uh, screen shared.
It'd be nice if it was fully activated, wouldn't it? We might have to go to participants, but I'm not sure.
Daniel.
It's great.
Yeah.
My, what am I, my cold up coast?
Let's put a little city on the chair.
What's that?
There we go, it's coming.
So we, this isn't quite a, just present to you, it is more interactive questions, I mean, we're at a point where there's the bulk of the document. Uh, we'd like to make some headway on, you know, we have to start. Uh, he has to start feeling out what should or shouldn't be, you know, managed, sold, rebuilt, uh, all the amounts, so I think we're. We're gonna let Daniel walk us through some stuff, um, his slides. I might have to run the matrix if we get to that part, Daniel, but we'll figure that out if we get there, if we're gonna start picking away at stuff. Yeah, I'll let you walk through the, the stuff here and get us going.
Yeah, no, I wasn't going that far, Steve, tonight, but does everybody see this screen that says master programming workshop?
Yes.
Good. Um, and then just a bit of a correction for the, for the record. Uh, my last name is P O D O L L, it's Podol, not Hodum. I've been called many things, I never heard that one before, that's good. So yes, uh, thanks, Steve, and hi again, everybody. Uh, I thought first, I thought for uh, just the agenda tonight, I would sort of tell you what we've got ongoing. Steve started to brief on it, but we're, we're updating the report, uh, from review comments received. We got uh, good comments uh, back finally from, I think, Steve and his staff, Larissa. Uh, those aren't all updated yet, but they will be soon, uh, very clear, uh, in, in PDF form. Uh, we're, in part of that, we're doing uh, uh, condition assessment finessing. Uh, there's just tweaks here and there on things and answering some questions that folks still had. Uh, we're also gonna clarify maintenance and replacement costs uh, better. I think you saw some of those before, uh, and I like to break them down. Uh, further, uh, in the two different, I would say, uh, FCI index ratings that we have. That said, uh, we're sort of clarifying, clarifying some of that too, so you'll be able to see. More or less, uh, based on the FCI uh, rating, uh, how much chunks of money can go towards maintenance, things like that. So I think that will be a, much clearer, uh, by the time you see the final report. Uh, and then, uh, there was request just to make some more definitive recommendations. Uh, it sounds like I'm maybe being a little too, uh, non-recommending, or at least our wording is. Uh, maybe, uh, not giving you guys enough, uh, this is a, you know, again, a very strong recommendation on our part, we'll try to do that. Uh, that said, any questions or anything adding, uh, that we need to add from anybody around the table? Uh, relative to just the ongoing pickups? Okay? So this evening, I thought, uh, first of all, just to ask, I, I don't know if everybody is there or have been able to. But uh, has there been any real decisions made on the capital facilities? And I, I asked that question relative to, uh, these, um, slides, if you recall, uh, some time ago. Uh, we sort of got this sort of, uh, pulled back around, uh, and got apples for apples, right? If you will, with at least the idea of giving you numbers for retain and renovate and build new. Have, have you had any internal further discussions on any of those, uh, slides at all?
City administrator McNamara.
Um, yeah, I just thought I would answer really quickly, I think, and um, anybody who would like to correct my understanding, please do. But we're really waiting on this report to make those decisions. So I think the answer is no.
Yeah, we haven't discussed this since the last time you were here.
Okay, so some of the things, uh, that we need, oh, sorry, go ahead, uh, council.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, express like kind of how I, I thought that part of this process was that. Um, your group would help facilitate these conversations about what we should do, not just a report on facility conditions. Does that make sense? I guess that's what I thought these meetings were, is where we were gonna have those conversations.
Yes, and, and again, maybe we're misconstruing, but I need, we do need some decisions to help us get to the next stage. And that stage was about, uh, trying to, I believe, and you guys correct me, but to create some funding mechanisms. Uh, for these, uh, different, uh, scenarios. And so I, I guess I was thinking again that, uh, if we sort of took a poll, you know, I guess if we just took a poll around the table right now. Uh, and test the waters, uh, or is there, can anybody, again, just tell us, are we interested in selling assets at all? I mean, again, without any sort of, uh, again, numbers finalized, but um, is there a general, can I ask that general question? Cause I've never been able to actually ask that question itself.
And city administrator McNamara, did you have another? I, I think I saw a hand or a figure or something, but I just wanted to check in with you.
Yeah, I don't think we're prepared to kind of go around when we don't have full council. In addition, this is not a regular council meeting, so this is a workshop. So I want to be really clear that, um. You know, certainly council can offer their, you know, uh, kind of, uh, informal feelings about this. But the, this, this project and report that has been ongoing for three years is meant to inform. Whether we will be making those decisions, so, um. This is, uh, one, from a formality perspective, this is not a venue where those decisions can be made. And two, um, I think maybe we need to have a conversation about what we're hoping to achieve tonight.
Sure, so, um. The, I, well, I, I was sort of getting to that, so maybe you want to, uh, elaborate more. Uh, because what I thought I was going to do is at least, uh, talk about some more of the decisions for where we left, last left off. And that was, you know, the envisioning of trying to figure out, um, again, interest in. All of these assets, uh, and being able to at least go forward with putting together, again, some funding mechanisms for that, so. I'll step back.
Director Blanchowski, did you have a question or?
So, so Dana, I think the visioning documents, like on the city hall slide three, those are at a point where I think. The apples to apples comparisons have been edited. So maybe if we talk about the values on the form, again, like slide three, uh, city hall, you have the existing versus the proposed bill. How it fits in today's, uh, I guess footprint of staffing relative to deficiencies and, and how those numbers now are. Are, are kind of moved around to be apples to apples on retained versus build new, do you want to maybe start with? You know, that, those, we have three slides. Um. You have city hall options, police options, and then the public works yard slash shop, right? And I think the last kind of left off, we were a little, um, what's the word? It wasn't quite, I guess, clear on how one column would equal the other, so we could have a, a fair mathematical comparison on what to keep. Or, in this case, the city hall, like, do you keep it, or do you have to remodel it and do you add on more of those programs? I think those forms to help guide and start to inform some of the decisions are here to discuss, right? So that's probably the, the easiest things to just go around and reaffirm the numbers. Uh, explain what it means to have a, you know, retain, renovate versus, um, well, we don't have enough space, then you're gonna have to add space somewhere. And that cost plus that cost equals X versus, you know, building new is Y, to help guide again. What ends up coming out of the recommendations and the what and where are down the road? We have to have some blocks to build things with, right? So that'd be the easiest approach to kind of go through. Finalize something, and those could be these numbers that end up informing, you know, the next conversation.
Yes, correct, then, and I can hit these again, again, these are important slides for us. Uh, just to continue that conversation, because what I was getting at, again, minus the complete full report. The pieces and parts that are still missing are, again, what we promised, which was to create some funding mechanisms for these types of things. And to be able to do that, again, I was coming tonight, if we can't make those decisions holistically for all of those buildings. I was gonna recommend, uh, pushing forward, uh, a couple of the, uh, asset outcomes for funding mechanisms exercise, for funding mechanism exercise. Now, would again, just be taking on the public works and shops, and then the option A, combined city hall and police, which really had to do with. The, uh, extremes of the entire report, you know, there's the least expensive part, public works and shops, and the most expensive, which is the city hall and police. So if I just, again, remind everybody what these are. Uh, the. Sorry, did I hear, there's a hand up, maybe?
Sorry.
No.
There was not, go ahead, Dana.
Oh, okay, yeah. So, th- this exercise again was, uh, very simply straightforward to retain and renovate and to build new. And if you, again, look at these numbers, for instance, you retain and renovate was to, was all based on. Uh, again, our programming exercises of growth of program.
Daniel, I'm sorry to interrupt, you, we did have a hand up, um, our director Thomas.
Uh, yeah, I think that we need to convene this particular portion over and be better prepared. So that we can have some internal discussions with A R C and Steve and the city administrator. Cause I wanna make sure we're using our time correctly, and I don't feel like we are right now.
Okay.
Does council feel good at that?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. Can we confirm the values on these three sheets that are?
Yeah.
I can't read them.
Yeah, we didn't get anything in the packet. So if you go into Facebook, yes, I'm watching this soon, you can, um, from the link in our agenda packet and turning volume off. You can see the presentation on your screen and expand it.
Oh, I can, you know, do it there.
Kind of last minute to try to analyze numbers, but. I understand, but the question is whether or not people can see the screen, and so I'm just sharing information out, whether or not people can see the screen and how they can do it.
It's, you know.
He's gonna even, or, yeah.
So I do, again, and we can end it real quick too, but I think those values and the apples and oranges approach was an important piece of information, helped guide some of those. Decisions, costs, uh, what do you do or don't do? Uh, that we can. Just let Daniel double check those.
You were talking about the updated numbers, right?
Yes, we, we had questions on that before, uh, it was hard to compare the two, again, is. Retain, renovate versus what is the comparison?
One of the, can I just ask a quick question on these, since we're looking at these? Okay, so one of the ones I remember, cause it's been a little while, um, is the, um, in the two columns, the remaining useful life. Versus the projected useful life, I just wanna clarify, so for example, I'm looking at the public works yard and shops. So the remaining useful life, I thought that was one of the things we had brought up of like, you're, um, what would make more sense is to have, if you renovated it? What would the number of years be for that? And that one, that one pops out at me, cause nine years for public works yard and shops is really low compared to, if you built a brand new building for it, it would be seventy-five years. So I just wanted to confirm that all of those numbers got updated, or is that still showing the remaining useful life as is with no renovation in the left-hand column under? That was in the left, remember?
Yes, correct.
So it is still showing, so on the left-hand side, remaining useful life means without any renovation at all?
That's correct.
Do we have a way, though, to estimate if we were? Cause that was kind of one of the things was, if you were to put, I mean, I think, I mean, I don't know, I don't want, I'm not speaking for anyone but myself. I mean, I think it's pretty obvious moving toward building, some kind of new building, if sometimes it's just looking at what are the options? I mean, right now, we're renovating public works, you know, so obviously that wouldn't be included, but you know, um, you're looking at in that column, the amount of money it costs to renovate it. So then what then would be the remaining useful life if we renovated it? Like, I imagine it wouldn't be seventy-five years, but I know it's not nine years either. Is it in there?
It's in the vision.
Is it in the visioning?
It's in the visioning, so if you look at the left-hand column, um.
Wait, we should.
On the visioning asset outcomes.
Well, this one says visioning too.
Three, uh, if you're looking at city hall. That's a public works yard, so if you're looking.
Right.
For example, let's say hall, at the bottom, after the total to retain builds up, that's elsewhere, it says remaining useful life with maintenance. And on the other side is projected useful life for building.
Yeah, so I was just confused that, cause it didn't say that for like the public works one, or, you know, so I'm just confused about. So, so what they're saying, what he's saying it means though, is remaining useful like with maintenance, like if we didn't do a new renovations, if we just continue maintaining it as is, that's the remaining useful life. What we don't have is a number of, if you did pour all that money into it, I'm not saying we wanna do that, but if you did pour all that money into it to renovate it, what would then be the remaining life then? That's the number of it, I don't know. Just wanna, I'm glad you clarified that, it always says like, maybe I totally missed that. So is that something that can be estimated, or, I mean, I just wasn't sure, um, cause that was something we talked about at the last meeting.
Sure, no, that, that can be estimated, yeah.
And then, Daniel, how much is the facility, the red, the percent of facility requirement? So thirty-four percent, how does the deficiency in space roll up into the life, or does it?
It's so, yeah, so the, the red, again, is the expansive of the program, right? That's, that's, again, we're telling you that by the time you get to the year end. Uh. You, you have to add forty thousand, two hundred and thirteen square feet to the original size. And what we're, we're trying to show you is that that doesn't fit right on the site.
So, yeah, that's a little bit of my point of the table, so I know everybody's very interested in numbers, but when, when you have to cut bait, you have to cut bait, and the numbers may not matter.
Yeah, and I, and again, not, not to, not to belittle your exercise, but the public works structure itself is the worst structure you have. And a- again, we're trying to, again, we didn't, we never in our, in our wildest dreams would imagine renovating that structure to get it up to the current code. So I guess I'm meaning, being more blunt with that.
Yeah, no, which is fine, but you're, you're not making anybody feel bad. Um, so I guess my question is, no, no matter, you know, what the cost was, could you fit what you, as a consultant, recommend to fit on that space, fit on that space?
No. No, and that, and that's what this is saying, it's, you know, you have to find another spot that can hold thirty-four percent growth. Of, you know, new public works program. So if you look at the existing square footage, thirteen thousand, six hundred and nineteen, that's the existing, just to renovate that, there's a cost. To renovate it all and grow, you need forty thousand, two hundred and thirteen square feet elsewhere, somewhere else, and it wouldn't fit on that site. So that's how these things all played out, right? You jump over to the new, new build side, you see that forty thousand, two hundred and thirteen square feet, that's to construct new buildings. And then the other factors involved as well.
So it might be helpful if there, are there other differences in what we're seeing right now versus what we saw at the last meeting, or?
Um.
Helpful to call it out, since, I mean, we didn't have a chance to look at this beforehand, so I just can't right now. It would just be easier if you could tell me what was different.
No, there, there's no difference, yeah, the, these haven't changed since the last time you saw them. There's, uh, again, we're just responding to some square footage numbers. But again, without discussing that further tonight, it's irrelevant to talk about. These are, nothing's changed in these slides from the last, since the last time.
I'll just jump in one more time and I know, but maybe we just need to call it good and come back, um. Because maybe once I start going, stop, but I just have questions. Um, but I don't know, but I know Director Thomas had mentioned maybe we should just come back. Director Landeski, I mean, what do you, Mayor, do you want to, what are your thoughts?
Um, I would just like to add, you know, the report's much more comprehensive, but when we're. Um, not looking at a document every day, I think we need narrative to accompany some of this stuff. That describes um kind of where not just the line items, uh, there are many of us that are. Uh, need to read the text instead of just listen to understand it, and some of that are visual and some that can just look at. Uh, this list and totally get it, but we all learn and comprehend differently, uh, so I think, and so does our community. Um, so I think that is one of the things that we need is, um, you know, those documents, you know, in the next presentation to. Um, it's a combination of simplification, but also clarifying, um, what. What this data is, um, and you know, this is. This conversation has ultimately been happening for well over fifteen years, uh, at the city. And so we're, we're definitely in a spot where we need to have. Um, clarity on our existing buildings, um, the, the renovation and the potential building of new. Um, we will be doing our municipal financial plan, which is my understanding and what the goal was to get, you know, the, the actual overall. Um, funding mechanisms and figure out how the city is to afford these things. Um, so I think, you know, focusing first and foremost on. Um, making sure the data is in an easy to digest format for council and the public will be very helpful in getting. All of us to a decision, um, and getting that collaboration to making some recommendations and having some final options on the table to look at. Um, I think we all know, for example, City Hall and the public works yard are critical infrastructure. Um, and those are likely to be our top priority, being as that we're renovating the police station right. Or have just finished renovating the police department, um, and are renovating the wastewater treatment plant buildings. Um, but, um, you know, we are starting to get on tight fringe, especially when it comes to attaining funding for some of these problems as well. So, um, simplification, um, and if it means, you know, we need some assistance from. You know, our communications person or others, or uh, me and Mayor Carter to sit in and, and help. Um, identifying the information that will be useful to folks, I think we're happy to. Get about that.
Yeah, and I think a lot of it is just really checking those boxes for transparency with the community and showing. You know, that simple data of here's how we're basing our decisions on, and here's how we came up with our decisions that we look towards. Doing the background work, but a big part of this too, that I, I think was a part of this, but tell me if it wasn't, because I thought it was. Is looking at site selection options, like would this lot back here work for? A City Hall slash Police Department, yes, or if not, what other sites, you know, because we own other parcels, so part of that was. Um, like I understand, you know, the public works here, I would need to move or, you know, and we kind of talked about some things last time, I think of like. Oh, could we do something just outside city limits, understanding the pros and cons of that, knowing if it's too far, well, now you're adding on a lot of mileage, that kind of stuff. Um, but I think we just, you know, I, like I said, I'm only speaking for myself, I think it's pretty obvious we need a new structure. Um, but then what comes after that is that, well, you know, how do you do that? Like, is it City Hall and Police or is it something else? Where does it go? Does it go where the police department is right now? Um, you know, what sites are we looking at? Why would they work or why wouldn't they work? So that the public knows too, that we didn't just pick this one because we thought that would look nice. You know, like, I just want to back it up a bit with something more substantial, um, but that's about all I have to say for now, because it sounds like we maybe need to do a little more. Um, background work. Sorry, yes, so yeah, go ahead.
No, if I could just add too, I, I think there, there might be a miscommunication relative to specific sites. I mean, the master plan thought again was this very high level. High level study and the numbers and things that we've all pulled together, we kept using the term amorphic sites, right? So could go anywhere within the ball. Uh, and so everything is based on sort of devolve sites themselves, but we haven't narrowed the things down to. Other than what you folks have seen, which again is just this, we've talked about, uh, Big Rock. Talked about, you know, the visitor's center and, and the existing public works. Uh, we, we spent way too much time. And probably still talking about Doherty Farm, because I know you folks said we don't want any public works out there, but. Again, that representation was just to show you what two acres looked like, that's all that was, but. We, we haven't specifically been finding sites, and I don't have anybody on my team that's actually. Looking for sites within the wall, so again, we can talk about that. Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, I don't think the expectation was more art to find sites in this presentation. It's to show us where our, you know, the original scope and discussion and budget when this all came about was to look at our buildings, look up what you take to renovate. Or build a new and look at our needs analysis. So I, I know that council's not expecting a site selection, that's our next step after having all of this information. Uh, you know, that transparent look at our buildings, uh, because we have been having internally a discussion long before our Kingmont Board. Um, and this was the big information council needed, uh, and maybe the public needed to. Help, uh, understand our actual situation and get to the point of moving forward.
Yeah, if you, uh, I, I know you, you guys don't like me right now, but if you guys. Uh, wouldn't mind, could I just show you something since I have you all here, because I thought we did some clarity in the report?
Okay, I think just a moment, they're trying to re-add you.
Sorry, say that again.
They're trying to re, I think you can't share anything right now, so they're trying to re-add you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Uh, we had a couple hands up, if that's okay, while, while they're doing that, I saw a council member, Natalie and then Shaver.
Yeah, um, this is just to ask about the financing, I mean, most of the buildings, if we did sell them, we'd maybe raise six hundred one million dollars. So if we're talking about thirty six million dollars, that's a drop in the bucket, so having some kind of. Uh, financing strategy, whether we have an extra million or not, is nearly totally irrelevant. And so I think that. It, we shouldn't be making a decision about what direction you go and then look at funding strategies. Because for me, my decision would be. Based on feasibility of being able to finance it, not that you had everything pinned down. But at least some type of general framework of how we can cobble together, um, these different options, um. So that's why I, I just wanted to share that, Councilmember Shaver.
Yeah, just to re, I think this is probably the most important, actually, decision this council's been making. For a long time and it's continued to affect people all for many, many years to come. No matter what we come up with, it's likely going to involve some type of debt. Uh, and we want to make sure that, that, you know, that financial, uh. Debt is something that makes sense, that, that we certainly get our banking through the butt. For as far as new facilities, uh, are, are concerned. And, uh, what I would like this to, to do is, especially, it's been a while for me at least, that I've looked at, looked at any pack. Because I'd like to actually have some study guy who looked over the updated pack. Uh, then get back, back together after each council member has had some time to absorb that. Because making, you know, making decisions on the fly, especially when, you know, my brain's a little cold as far as, you know, the information that we have previously. Uh, doesn't make sense, we have, we have to, uh, like, so, eat down in the details and then look at the facilities.
Well, both the mayor and then our city administrator.
To the point of, you know, cost of buildings, et cetera, um. Absolutely, we have to know what we can afford, um, first and foremost, we have a responsibility for our employees and our residents to know what the needs are today and into the future. Um, you can modify a plan after that and based on cost and what come up. Um, and what funding you're able to attain, do that on a regular basis with all of our roads projects. Um, what my concern is and has been for many, many years is the fact that this city has historically bought more worn down buildings. Um, you know, not maintaining those facilities as we're seeing now, that could sound as a huge capital improvement deficit. Uh, where we didn't need to be here, um, and part of my goal is making sure that we don't pass on. More burden than is absolutely necessary to our future taxpayers in our community. Uh, and make sure that we have the space that works for our employees for now into the future. Um, as well as making sure that we have facilities that are safe, that are resistant to fire, resistant to earthquakes. That are resistant to frequent power outages, uh, the recent article, uh, about, um, the power system in Washington state is that we have some, some of the. More power outages in the other state than this country at this point. Um, so it really starts to highlight the need for ensuring that we are taking care of. Um, our community and having that spine of. A solid facility that meets the needs of our operations is critical to being able to serve our community in good times. And essential, um, in those matters. So, uh, that's the lens I'm looking at it from, um, there are lots of creative ideas as far as, um. Obtaining additional funding, but those all can be modified if you don't get that funding. Uh, but, uh, we have a responsibility, first and foremost, to make sure we have the facilities for our employees. Um, and we don't have enough space for existing employees as it is. Um, so public works, uh, facility remodel is helping with that. Um, but again, that building's not going to last forever, and the police department is still fifteen years past its useful life, it's a building. Even with that, the, um, renovation, so, uh, this is really important, um. To, you know, look at for that big holistic basis, and the truth be told, without municipal financial plan. I don't know that we're going to be able to identify whether or not we can afford these, um, we see other cities, um, make. Decisions all the time, um, that are not right for their communities as a whole, whether it's overbuilding or underbuilding. Um, overbuilding is a problem that can be solved, underbuilding is a problem that costs many times over what, when to begin with. If you don't build ready to start with it, um, and that's not fair to taxpayers or. Um, the employees that you need to keep on staff to keep the city running.
And administrator McDann?
Hi, yes, thank you, um, I just want to, um, touch base and kind of as a way to recall. This project is to work in tandem with two other outstanding projects. The municipal financial plan, RFP, which has been written but not released, because we're waiting for our finance director to start. As well as a workload analysis project, all of which are budgeted for this biennium. So it's kind of three different projects rolled into one. Ultimate decision-making matrix, which is. The state of our facilities, what we need, where we would put them. A municipal financial plan, which again, the RFP is written, I can release it as soon as I have someone who can do the work to spearhead that project. And then the third component is a workload analysis, um. Project, which as soon as the RFP for the municipal financial plan was going to be released, we were going to release that one. So ultimately, if we could get all of this work and reporting done and the projects completed. With real recommendations, you would have everything you need to make good, sound, financial decisions and operational decisions. That would kind of lay out your path for the future, so I, I just wanted it to be a reminder to council and to the community that. There are other pieces of this that are outstanding, that all work in conjunction together.
Thank you, uh, councilmember a couple?
Yeah, I, I think in future meetings, I, I would like to see a little bit more from the city staff as to what the expectations are. Um, of the council prior to the meetings and, um. I, I saw a big lack of communication between what Art was expecting to present and what. We were expecting to see. I don't know, is someone, is there like a, a project leader, a project lead for this? Activity, uh, within the city? Or is it just kind of? You are? Oh, okay, well.
Yeah, I started with an old PM that we didn't transition to a new one since their work was what it is, so.
Okay.
But, yeah, we talked about having some off, uh, we're open for anything, we want to get it wrapped up and something we want to have as a document, so I do need some help and. If somebody wants to help us. We'll look to what will work for folks, like, a game pick would be wonderful, so.
Then if you want more than one from council to jump in there, I mean, I'm trying to remember, I feel like I might have been on the public works committee when we first started looking. You know, so, um, I just kind of want to look back at what, you know, the original scope was and, and figure out what is left, what do we need to get to? And it sounds like that is a little something that needs to happen outside of the usual.
And I almost feel like a Saturday morning workshop with the city council. Where we get to sit down and go through this for two or three hours instead of half an hour for a five minutes presentation. Every two months and try to recall what is taught about two months ago.
Yeah, so kind of going back to what was said, it sounds like maybe some offline discussion to try and figure out how to get to that point. And I, I think that could be a really good option to put a bow on it, because this is, I mean, I can't think of many other things as important as what this is right now. And that's been kind of in the works or in the whatever, for a very long time. And we do want to come to resolution on it and move forward, so, uh, we need to get this wrapped up, but. Uh, we do appreciate you, Daniel, and being here, um, as we worked through all this. And it sounds like I think that's a wrap on this item for tonight, does that sound good? Thank you for your time tonight, I hope you have a good one, you're welcome to stay, but you probably have other things to do.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, so with that, we'll move on to presentation on development standards. Uh, policy drivers' interactions and new mandates with our senior coordinator, Roy Davis, and community development director, Larry Constance.
Good evening.
Greetings, uh, I need to be able to. To share, I have a, it says the host has disabled participant screen sharing.
Here you are, Troy, it should be okay now.
All right, thanks, Sherry. All right. Um, good evening, Mayor and Council and the planning commissioners that we have in attendance today. Tonight, we want to, and this is an old photo of Duval, of course. Obviously, I haven't figured that out, it's labeled Duval, but.
Well, Troy, can you hold on a second? The screen, and some moon.
Okay.
Just a second, we need to move it over to. That would be not from the view options. There was this. All right, about that, Troy.
Are good to go?
Yeah, can you see the screen, can you see the presentation?
Um, I can see it on my screen. Can you?
Can we just check and make sure that you can see the presentation as well?
I can, thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. All right, thank you. All right, so tonight we want to talk about our unified development regulation update, uh, that's pending. Or it's actually kind of already started, but, um, we kind of wanted to. Uh, get you primed and give you an overview of kind of what's coming down the pipe in terms of updating our unified development regulations. Uh, so what are unified development regulations, you know, just a quick back backdrop on that. Uh, so essentially, when cities have regulations for development. Um, they can place those regulations under a number of different titles. I feel recall from our conversation that we had probably, I don't know, maybe a year ago, where we talked about kind of how our code is organized. Um, different titles, you know, essentially can, can cover any topic. And so what unified development regulations do is they say, hey, we're going to throw. All of our, uh, development regulations under one title. Uh, and that is usually for, um, ease of use, uh, reasons, right? Um, that way we don't have to go. Um, that way we don't have to go digging through other titles. To figure out what all the development regulations are, we can find them in one title, so it's just an organizing principle. Uh, that some cities use, some cities surprisingly don't utilize it, um, but Duval, we are a city that does. You uh utilize that, and so. Our unified, unified development regulations cover everything from permit processing to development agreements to our zoning regulations. To our tree protection standards, landscape standards, signs, uh, accessory dwelling units, wireless facilities. Um, all the regulations that impact or govern, I should say, uh, development within city limits. So the big question is why, why up the, why update these code regulations now? Uh, typically, code updates or major code updates coincide with periodic updates. Uh, you know, as Laura has probably briefed you uh before, we are. On track for updating our comprehensive plan in concert with our twenty twenty four update mandate. Uh, as you recall, our last time that we updated our comprehensive plan on a major scale was back in twenty fifteen. And prior to that, I believe it was two thousand six. So typically, once we update our comprehensive plan, you know, you update your development regulations to ensure that your. Development regulations are implementing your comprehensive plan that you've just updated. And so our last major update was in two thousand seven, uh, to implement our two thousand six comprehensive plan. In twenty fifteen, uh, we did add, um, I think a new chapter and we amended a couple chapters. Our tree protection ordinance, our sensitive areas, um, and we added the R twenty zoning regulations. But uh, you know, following our twenty fifteen update, you know, we didn't do a major. Overhaul of our development regulations and that's simply uh due to the reality that it takes time and resources. To, to update these things, they're not simple, so uh, we try and do the best we can with the resources we have. Uh, the other kind of implementing reason is lessons learned uh from implementation of our existing. Development regulations, so obviously as we develop uh. Review permit applications for new site plans, like commercial developments or for new subdivisions. We're always gonna kinda get the chance to see how these regulations work. Um, sometimes they don't have the intended effect. Uh, sometimes the language of our code regulations aren't strong enough to really give us kind of the push that we need. Uh, or, you know, demand of our development community, um, certain things that we expect. Uh, and so it can lead to a lot of, you know, back and forth and. Uh, delays and whatnot in, in working with uh the developer to get to a place where we're both comfortable, so. Uh, what we hope to do as part of the update is to, is to take those lessons that we've learned from existing code language. Improve them so that when we get new projects in, we don't have the same issues or the same problems. Uh, and, and essentially strengthen our, our regulations, so. That's kind of a huge one, and then the other kind of huge compelling reason is we do have a handful of state uh legislation that has come through. Or, or is coming through the pipeline, uh, and so we don't really have much of a choice. We've gotta make some updates to comply with, with state law, so those are kind of the, the fundamental reasons for why now. So now I just kinda wanna talk about briefly some of the recent legislation. Uh, the local project review act has been amended by the state legislature. It becomes effective July twenty third, twenty twenty three, so we're already kinda passed that, that date. Um, part seven, which is, I think, if I can remember off the top of my head, kind of some of the most compelling parts, which are, are deadlines. Um, aren't due until January first, twenty twenty five, so in part, we have some time, but we've already begun work on this. Uh, amendment, getting the drafts initiated. Uh, so what this impacts is our DMC fourteen oh eight, which is our permit processing chapter. Uh, it gives us new permit review deadlines. And it also includes a monetary penalty for not meeting those deadlines, so that's very unique and very new. Uh, so basically what that means is if we don't meet certain review deadlines that are set by the state when we're reviewing a permit application. We're obligated to refund some of the permit fee back to the applicant. Um, so this can have a bit of, uh, obviously a, a financial impact if we're not able to meet our deadlines. Uh, we will require to do annual reporting once our population hits twenty thousand, but that's so far down the road that we don't have to quite worry about that. Um, certain things are exempt uh from site plan review. Uh, commerce is directed to provide us with technical assistance and grant funding opportunities um. For implementation, and it also kinda kicks uh planning commission off to the side here because. Uh, administrative review of residential product projects will be required, and we'll talk a little bit more about that with another amendment that's coming. Uh, forward, but essentially what this does is it reforms how we do our permit processing to a certain degree. Uh, the middle missing housing bill, this bill doesn't impact us, but I wanted to include it in my report and presentation just to keep it on your radar. Uh, obviously, there is a huge strain of affordable housing in our state and in a lot of places and across the country. Uh, and we're missing a lot of certain housing types uh in our residential landscape. Many communities are, and what, what's happened over time is it's pushed out. Uh, a lot of different uh groups and subgroups of, of people from being able to afford housing. Uh, you know, within certain jurisdictions, one of the funny things as a side note, uh, that I noticed here in Tucson. Is there's quite an array of uh housing types, uh, so yeah, I'm in the city limits, um, and. Everything is gridded, of course, but you can go from block to block to block and you'll get a mix of all types of housing. Um, all within the same neighborhood, uh, so that was kind of a unique from my growing up in Washington where things are very. Um, you know, separated and, and usually not quite as diverse. Uh, so it's been really kinda interesting to see how it all kinda works together and gels together and it's, it's actually quite interesting. Um, but anyway, I wanted to keep that on your, on your radar, it doesn't affect us, but. Again, as we talk about our housing action plan, um, you may hear that term missing uh metal or metal housing. Um, so it's good to, to be familiar with. Uh, the next legislation that's come up is the accessory dwelling unit bill. Again, this is all part of the push by the state to encourage affordable housing options within our housing stock. Um, it becomes effective within six months of updating our comprehensive, uh, comprehensive plan. And so we'll begin work on that, I believe our assistant planner, Acela, or associate planner, excuse me, Acela will be kinda spearheading this. Um, update, but uh, it does affect the minimum number of ADUs per lot. Uh, and the standard is going to be a lot, for the allowance of two, uh, a minimum of two ADUs. Um, per lot, based on certain criteria. And it also prevents us as a city from imposing certain regulations such as the size. Um, I think if I read correctly, the minimum uh ADU size will have to be at least a thousand square feet. Um, it'll impose some limitations on our dimensional standards, uh, occupancy requirements. Uh, it'll limit us from requiring street improvements with ADUs, which we normally don't do anyway, um, it'll. Uh, be impacted by how we can do design review for this, uh, it affects what parking standards we can apply. As well as impact fees and CCNR restrictions. Um, and those CCNR restrictions are, I think it's a pre- preemptive measure so that new. Um, plats that come on board, you can't um eliminate the possibility of ADUs through CCNRs. And kinda one of the big ones here is owner occupancy will no longer be required or allowed. Uh, typically in municipality uh zoning requirements, we usually always require that, you know, the. The landowner either live in the ADU or the primary dwelling unit, uh, this legislation says, no, can't do that. Uh, you can rent out both the primary house and the ADU to, to different um. Non-related persons, uh, you don't have to require the owner to live there. And then to kinda back up on this a little bit too, um. Some other updates that we'll do to this chapter also involve, you know, just some complaints and stuff that we've heard from the community, you know, over the years as. As we've gotten ADUs in, so we'll make some other adjustments too, so we can um. Do the best we can to, you know, soften some of the impacts and uh reduce potential conflicts uh in the code with. Uh, neighboring properties.
Do I have a question from a council member? Yeah, you said something about CCNRs, new CCNRs couldn't have the. Restrict to ADUs, what about existing CCR restrictions?
Yeah, from, from my reading, if I understand correctly, existing CCNRs were exempt. Uh, it was, it was any new ones that were brought on, um, wouldn't be able to exempt ADUs.
And I would like to point out that this could very much disproportionately impact downtown. Again, um, so most of our neighborhoods, it's the more elite neighborhoods and the newer neighborhoods that have the CCNRs. Um, so it will actually create more inequity throughout our entire house, which is under the city of Duval. Which, um, unfortunately, the build sponsors were not, uh. Were not willing to understand and make amendments to adjust to those types of things, and so, um, this is. It will change the absolute character of all the cities and it's okay to change the character. But this is putting uh a big hammer down, I particularly have a real concern with the owner not being required to be occupying. At least one of the units, especially for, um, I have friends that built an ADU in their backyard in another city specifically so that. They can pass the house down to the children and uh, that friend is now living in that ADU and under this rule, that would no longer be allowed if they, they were to build it today. Uh, which also limits the ability for multi-generational households to reside on the same property. Um, which is a big issue as well as more and more people are becoming multi-generational households.
I think, you know, one thing we're gonna ask about too is we're gonna look at all that's about fifteen years of our CC and municipal projects and see where. There might have been a prohibition so we can start to kind of get a lineup together and then as we're reviewing. CCNRs for new, um, final plots, we're actually looking at that. Thank you, Troy, you can, you can keep going.
Thank you. Uh, the next one, this one's also a big one that will have a, a pretty big impact, and that's regarding design review. Uh, so again, part of the state's uh push to uh create expediency uh in the process. Um, we are drastically changing, you know, how we do design review. This becomes effective six months, within six months of updating our periodic plan. Um, and it impacts, of course, our design guidelines, our design guidelines will essentially become design standards. Uh, because the bill is requiring that the code language uh for design be um pretty clear. Uh, and not so subjective. Uh, right now in our design guidelines, that's why they're called guidelines, because there's a lot of discretion in their application and a lot of. Um, flexibility in our design guidelines and that will have to go away, um, so they'll become more of design standards. Uh, it does impose some limitations, uh, it can't. Our design standards can't result in a reduction of density, height, bulk or scale as allowed by the zone. Uh, a couple elements are exempt, so if we have a historic district, uh, a landmark district. Um, those would be exempt from these requirements. Um, and the essential point of this legislation is it essentially takes. Design review out of our, out of the hands of our planning commission. Who have historically acted as our design review board for new commercial properties. Uh, residential multifamily properties and it puts it back in the hands of um city staff. Uh, so that then, you know, places all that kind of burden um back on staff and we lose. Our secondary source of, you know, backup per se to in, enforce. Um, design of our, of our guidelines, so. That's kind of the, the biggest impact of this, uh, it also limits when there are design review meetings. Um, in those rare champ, uh, instances, it will limit it to one meeting, one public meeting. So for example, sometimes when we do design review before the planning commission. Most of the time we can do it within one meeting, but sometimes it's two meetings. Um, I think in the time I've been here, most have been one, um, I think we've had one that went three times, you know, two or three times. Um, but what this bill says is, oh, you can only have one, you know, period. Um, so that again, uh, you know, restricts uh the role that the planning commission um. Uh, plays, so, uh, again, residential design review will all have to be administrative. Um, I might have misspoke, I can't recall off the top of my head of commercial. Is exempt.
Commercial is exempt from this, it only applies to residential.
Okay, perfect, uh, yes, so residential again will be administrative, so that means every time we get multifamily. Those are, you know, your, your townhomes, your apartment complexes, our condominiums. Um, right now, the only administrative design review we do for residential is for single-family homes. Uh, that are um one and two units at most, those we, we've always done administrative. Uh, but now we'll have to do our townhomes uh and condos and apartments uh administratively.
Uh, council member Shaker?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, thanks for it, uh. I'm not aware of it, Duval has anything designated as a historic history, is that true?
Uh, we, we do not.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, is it possible, is estimate like old town as a historic history? And I wonder, I mean, I'm, I'm, this is, this is more of a rhetorical question, but, but maybe as something we need to consider. Uh. In light of these legislative changes, which would put, I think, more, hopefully put more power back into the. Hands of the planning commission, so.
I need, I would, you, you can do that if a lot of work and then you, you really put progress on your existing. Land uses here and what they can do and can't do, you literally have to create a plan and a document. I would not necessarily be as worried about downtown because it's mostly commercial retail and purpose. And this applies to residential. So if you had maybe, you know, a really, let's say the city in the town of Snohomish on Avenue D. They have a lot of historic homes along that corridor, so that might be one area. Where they would go and do a historical designation on, on that corridor and we don't really have any remaining homes. That would be a historical corridor.
Hmm, okay, not even old town. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Troy, you can go into the next one.
Okay. Uh, the next one is regarding climate change, um, so this one, uh, was kinda hard for me to wrap my, my head around, there's a lot going on in this bill. Um, but it is, you know, effective in twenty twenty nine, so it's halfway through our. Uh, update of our compliance cycle, this so much doesn't necessarily affect our, our development regulations, title fourteen. So much as it affects our um, uh, policies. Uh, and our comprehensive plan, uh, and essentially it's, it's directing us to gear our. Comprehensive plan policies to be sensitive to um climate change impacts. Uh, so there's a lot of uh, uh, reporting and, and monitoring uh that will. Take place as part of this um climate change bill. And I, again, I'm not really super versed on this one, cause it was quite a beast, hard, hard to really kinda digest. Um, without further discussion, but uh, essentially this, this will be coming down the pipe, but. It'll focus more on our um policies as opposed to our regulations.
I'll just add, try to stand really quick, I was at the um. Washington planning directors conference last week and there was a lot of discussion on it, so there's still not a ton of clarity. The good news is we're positioned very well, we can, we don't have to, we call twenty twenty nine. Give words from twenty four and from any of the con plan community. However, cities that are due in twenty twenty five actually do have to implement them, so they're gonna be the first group to go through this. So we'll be able to see some, I'll say, learning lessons of how well it goes, if there needs to be any adjustments. We're gonna actually talk internally in the next two weeks between public works, planning and building. If this bill impact all three of, you know, our three big work groups. And then we'll come back and talk about whether or not we're gonna actually even apply for a grant in this go round. And if there's like some small. And if there's like some small, you know, that low hanging fruit. That we can buy off early, or if we really need to push it down the road. It is likely that we will. Push some of it down the road. We're already doing over half a million dollars worth of work over this. By any of, and I don't think we can handle over a million dollars worth of work in the by and then we just don't have capacity. And honestly, a hundred times. So stay tuned on this one. This one has most cities just, you know, trying to figure it out, so.
Thank you. Uh the next one is Housing Bill ten forty two in regards to commercial buildings and mixed-use buildings. It becomes effective six months after our comprehensive plan update. And what this bill does is it prevents jurisdictions from imposing certain restrictions on the conversion or addition of dwelling units. Uh to existing commercial and mixed-use buildings. Uh so I think the intent of this bill is to ensure that vacant office buildings don't go to waste. Um and can be utilized for residential purposes, you know, depending, of course, on market factors. Um obviously, I think the concern is kind of coming down the pipe that, hey, we've. Uh we have a little bit of a recession going on with commercial office space, and we may have some vacant office buildings, so. Um we want to, you know, ensure that a pathway is cleared for their potential conversion to residential use. Um should that be desired, so uh that essentially um. Kind of helps pave the way uh to ensure that that is possible. So the next question is, is what U D Rs, Unified Development Regulations, will we be updating? Uh so you can see there's quite a bit on our plate this time. It's a a bit more than in twenty fifteen. Uh following that update, we have some chapters that we're gonna do some major remodeling on and a few chapters that we're just gonna do some minor remodeling on. Obviously, our permit processing, our design guidelines, our A D Us, our comp plan amendment procedures. Our site plan criteria, our C P A. Uh regulations and our code enforcement, and code enforcement's in a different title, uh as you can see, but. That's uh a priority that we have because that one's so outdated. Um these these chapters are gonna take some some major, major revisions. Um as part of our update process, and then on our minor updates are just gonna include, of course, our definition section, landscape. Our tree protection, you know, that chapter still uh had its last major update just a couple few years ago, so it's just a matter of implementing some. Uh lessons learned into their uh signs. You know, we have the the Gilbert case out of Arizona here um. Uh that is requiring some minor modifications. Uh again, lessons learned from our our twenty zoning district, which is our our new. Uh district as, you know, coming out of the twenty fifteen update. Our additional development standards, just adding some clarity in there. Uh and again, some other ancillary updates throughout our zoning code. Um in relation to setbacks for area ratios uh and whatnot, and then our critical areas uh update. Uh that's due in twenty twenty five. Again, did do a major update just a few years ago, so this will just be some tweaking to uh adhere to updated state regulations. Uh long-term, uh way on the back burner, um maybe this is just my wishful thinking. But it would be nice to do some major uh restructuring and formatting of our uh Title fourteen. Uh and again, that's just to ensure that we have consistency of language, consistency of format, and ease of organization. Uh obviously, with codes over time getting amended and tweaked here and there, uh you know, can create issues and what we what. You know, a long-term goal would be is to get everything ironed out, smoothed out and organized. Um so that we have a an easy uh user-friendly um Title fourteen. But that's long-term. So what's the update process? Um we've, you know, talked about this a long time ago, but just as a refresher. You know, as city staff, what we do is we create drafts. Uh draft revisions, and then what we do is we have discussions. We have discussions internally with different departments to make sure that we're all on board and on the same page. And, you know, crossing our eyes, dot A R Ts, catching loopholes and other things. Then we have discussions, of course, with the planning commission and city council. Uh then we start making revisions based on input. Uh and then once we get to a fairly solid draft, it doesn't have to be a perfect draft. Uh we send it off to Commerce for review. Commerce, of course, distributes the draft to different state agencies who all take a look. Uh and they normally don't have comments, but it's just a state requirement that we got to do that. And then we review it for its environmental impact through the State Environmental Policy Act. Uh once we get through that process, we hold public hearings um to give opportunity for public input. Uh we. Can make further corrections from that point if necessary. And then council makes a final decision on the uh proposed amendments. And then once those uh are passed, we then send them off to be codified into our municipal code. So what's the status? Um right now, we've started work on our permit. Uh started work drafting our permit processing chapter, our uh updating our tree protection chapter. Our grading uh requirements that are located within our, currently within our design guidelines. Um and as well as our s- uh sign code so that we can comply with the Gilbert case. Uh other work on the other chapters will begin in twenty twenty four. And our zoning code work will span probably a couple of years, the next couple of years. Um as we get through, you know, kind of these these um hoops and jumps and. And time that we got to do, because code writing, as you know, is very time consuming, so it'll take a couple of years to get get through the process. So who participates? Who are all the stakeholders? So obviously, our city's development review committee, that's where we, that's our public works, building, fire, planning. That's our internal team. The planning commission participates. Public and stakeholder groups that are interested um participate. State agencies don't really play a big role, but again, through commerce, um. You know, they have an opportunity to to comment if they notice a conflict with with state regulations. And and of course, uh city council plays a role in in the update. So our next steps, this is kind of what our priority focus is gonna be, and I apologize if this is kind of a repeat of a previous slide, but again, we're gonna focus on getting our grading. Uh requirements um uh reformed. Uh because we know that that's a council priority. We've got to get our sign code updated, tree protection, our code enforcement. Uh things done. Then we're gonna try and shift focus on our state deadlines, so we can meet those. And that affects, you know, permit review, design guidelines, A D Us, like we talked about. And then we'll complete any remaining amendments, uh according to whatever priority um council has, so. That is the. Process and the overview of what's coming down the pipe. Uh are there any outstanding questions?
Uh Councilmember Shaker?
Yeah, cool question for, I think, for Mark. Uh, Mark, do you, do you? Do you, is there, do you think there's a role for the land use committee here or a way for a land use committee to help out?
Um I think, you know, given a couple of months, we're trying to still just get really situated. We honestly were. We have so many constraints right now with resources internally. We probably honestly will not go towards a committee because. If, then that's just more work that has to flow through us, and we've got so much going on. And we're gonna have advisory committees for like our comp plan, it's kind of the goal and the policy work. But when it comes down to the zoning code work, we're gonna do that internally, through our traditional met- you know, measures. Which is money commissioning council. I think if we got stuck on that thing, then we would come back and have a conversation.
Councilmember Nelson? So that brings up another question. I, when I see the process, I wanna. Is it gonna go through all of these underlying processes and then be. Fully baked and then council away, or are you saying that there will be discussions? Because you said something about, you know, if you get stuck, then you'll come to council or potentially, I just.
So we like firstly bake the pie.
Okay.
We do restrict and delete version, and we come back and we talk about, like, is this a mandate? Then, okay, we're really gonna do this. Where is that discretion in our area? And then we say, hey, we, what we've heard and learned through planning, commission, council, this is what our first. You know, rollout of this is. And I will tell you, we will have strikes and deletes and win. And so we're not afraid of coming to planning, commissioner, council and going, oh, we didn't get that quite right. And so we're gonna do a little bit earlier work because we're not using committees.
Okay, okay. And then uh my original question was, unless you want to go to someone else first? Uh Councilmember, the poll, do you have anything to say on that? I don't either. Okay, um is you talked about, you know, one, two and three, and our kind of buckets. Will, before implementation, will we have to get all the way through three and so you'll. Or each bucket will be implemented?
That's a great question. We are actually gonna inform them that we can go. You can do two things. In two thousand and seven, Y U saw that it was a full uh repeal and replace. Which is unusual. Cities only do that about every twenty years. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna do them one at a time. Some of them, we have to get a little bit more guidance as we go through the comp plan, so that's why, you know, some of them are gonna be a little bit further out into next year. But some of them, we already know what the mandate starts, so we're gonna try and kick those through the bucket first.
Okay, great. I'm excited to see this happen. No questions or comments? Okay, did you guys have anything else for?
No, thank you. You know, we weren't, this this presentation took us a little bit longer because we weren't quite sure how to do it. And we struggled a little bit internally, and then we just kind of like, okay, what is the basis? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you for the work on this. It was really helpful because it's it's complicated and it's and there's a lot.
You know, uh uh mayor, mayor two is that there's still another legislative session in court, and they might fix some things, add some things, we don't know.
The the expectation at this stage is that they're going to add it more um. Yes, uh and uh there's. It feels like at this stage in the prep for legislative session, that there's some legislators and they're just going to. Continue to platform with their priorities regardless of the impact overall and not wait for existing policy to be implemented in C T F X. Um and uh. I'll take a personal privilege here. I think everyone in the room will agree. One of the big challenges of all this policy can afford is that there isn't staff to implement it statewide. As people are leaving the planning profession, retiring and not going into it, we have a difficult time finding even finding consultants. And uh in my experience in the last year and a half with talking to some of these legislators, it's following that are leading this work. I wouldn't say are legislators, but the people that are leading this work and the prime sponsors of these bills. Are unwilling to hear. The hardships that that's going to create and the problems it's going to create in trying to solve the middle office problem.
We spent a half a day with A W B C, Law Stat, and some of the plumbers from D O P and P O V. And we were talking about that. We were very active in sharing. We don't have staff capacity. There is not. Capacity at consultant levels, you know, as you know, we're still down in point six F B E, but just within our department. There are cities out there that have been seeking planners for eighteen months for more. So it's just a really tight market. And so to hear that maybe that the legislature is gonna do more, which is what A W B C shared at that conference. Will be challenging, but you know, we're just gonna take one thing at a time, and we've got a plan to get work done over the next two years. And that's what we're gonna focus on, and if the legislature, you know, adds some more, then we'll come back and we'll have those discussions.
Be prepared to go to Olympia this year, um whether online. Or in person, um being a short session and seeing what happened in a lot of the high stakes. Um committee hearings, uh be prepared to go down in person and spend days doing that.
May I ask you one thing? I, you know, I continue, you're sort of about the state and how we try and control. Uh what's going on and evolve when their whole mindset is big cities, right? That's where we come from. That's what gets all the focus. Uh Seattle and all the suburbs and, you know, the larger cities in the state tend to take up. You know, what they think people need, what they think the future needs to be, separate communities, smaller communities like you all. Uh. They don't, they don't focus, they don't focus on that. And they don't understand what we need and what we don't.
Yeah, and that would be really great too with our communications person, and then before we go down to Olympia, to all get together, talk around and have a talk through your talking points, or really compare. Yeah, and I would just um say that, you know. Councilwoman Shaker, you just highlighted one of the key reasons why our smaller cities need to be very active in association with Washington cities. When you look at the makeup of the board of directors and the legislative committee. It is very diverse from across the state, and so when you look at what the Association of Washington City is actually active with legislate for, it's way more in line with what we need. Um the problem is less, it. Especially recently, the problem was less the big cities and the legislators themselves. And some of those legislators have come from cities. Uh some of them have no experience, um and that those two, well, the no experience. And the coming from larger cities that have been able to do all this policy work without the challenges that we have are. A couple of the items creating the challenges that would need unwilling to listen. And so the more people from jurisdictions apart sides where we are a fairly wealthy community, but that's something we have the money, that doesn't mean we can get the staff. Um that go and talk to people and put pressure, not just on them, but some of the industry groups that are also pushing this legislation. Uh the more chance we'll have, but we will not get there unless. Um more people are at the table, and and that's. You know, I. I know I've put a lot of time into it over the years. We've got money in the budget for our lobbyists primarily for um. Uh future city hall, but that's really what it takes uh is getting into legislators' offices, even from our districts. Um and going to those hearings and showing up and signing in and saying you're opposed and submitting um formal comments. That's the only path before it gets to the stuff, so. Um and sometimes it may be as much as asking for a cause. Or asking for um. For compromise, and what we have not seen much in the last three years. And that's where, especially in horrible housing and some other key issues that impact us. So um not trying to preach to the choir or anything like that, but um. That's what I see coming, and um it's gonna be really challenging for us in the future if we can't. Uh get a handle on it statewide.
All right, well, with that, we're at the end of our agenda, so thank you again to Tori Davis and our community development director for that presentation um. And just want to thank our planning commissioners and members of the public who joined us today, so with that, we'll go in the journal at six fifty six.